Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, March 13, 2024. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website. And those of you who are joining us at the table, please do not turn off your microphones. Our first order of business is roll call. The clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharlin.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith. Ms. Warwick. Mr. Wilson. Ms. Strasburger, chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our next order of business is a proclamation to be presented by Councilman Mosley.
Thank you. Can the Hill family come up? Yeah, everyone. Yes, yes. As the Hill family comes up, I do want to thank Council President and Madam Clerk Clark for making a special accommodation, the rare Wednesday proclamation. So, thank you so much. And want to thank the Hill family for coming here. I know many of you traveled a long way to get here to Pittsburgh today, so this is a very momentous occasion. Whereas John Preston, Pete Hill was born in Culpeper County, Virginia, Hamlet Abuna, on October 12, 1882, to Ike and Elizabeth Lizzie Hill, who were both Virginia natives. After the death of Mr. Hill's father in 1887, John, his mother, and siblings boarded a northbound train and settled in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania around 1887. They resided at 7221 Sesquahana Street in Homewood, and whereas Mr. Hill's professional baseball career is cited to begin at the age of 17 in 1889 with the Pittsburgh Keystone in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. The Pittsburgh Keystone existed before the first Negro Baseball League was founded in 1920. Hill remained with the team for two years, then joined the Cuban Ex-Giants and played for them from 1901 to 1902. And whereas Mr. Hill was recognized as the first great outfielder in black baseball history, the left-handed Hill was a five-tool player with several famed independent African-American teams: the Philadelphia Giants from 1904 to 1907, the Leland Giants from 1908 to 1910, the Chicago American Giants from 1911 to 1918. Whereas after several years of baseball excellence, Mr. Hill slugged his way into Ruthian Heights as Detroit Stars player-manager in 1919, before his professional baseball career wound down in 1925. After many glowing accomplishments, Mr. Hill was finally inducted into the Baseball Hall of Fame in Cooperstown in 2006. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare today, March 13, 2024, is John Preston Pete Hill Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Congratulations.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
Before I give the microphone.
Second, all in favor.
The Hill family this week, I do have to shout out my brother Rashine Hill, my fellow Perry Comer, we went to high school together, so. So, on behalf of the Hill family, we'd like to thank Pittsburgh City Council and the City of Pittsburgh. Thank you very much. Could my fellow members come up to take a photo before we start our business again?
I'm a constituent of Deb Gross, and I am here to express my support for Council approving the Vision Zero Plan. I moved to Pittsburgh in 2015. I've been biking around Pittsburgh since 2016. I've met amazing people, built community, and gotten to know so many neighborhoods through experiencing this city through non-individual motorized transport. I love to bike. I work as a bike tour guide downtown. I do bike things socially. Sometimes I bike when I could drive. Sometimes I drive when I could bike. Regardless, every night when I come home and I stand in front of my bathroom mirror and I realize I haven't been hit by a car, feels like a miracle. Because some of my friends have been hit by cars while riding bikes. There are some of the most experienced cyclists I know, but even if they weren't, no one deserves to get hurt, especially if it can be prevented. I believe we're going to move our city in the right direction when we take thoughtful, systematic approaches to preventing collisions. And I think government will be living up to its highest potential to enact this thoughtful policy. I would add, I would love to see a due date of sorts for enacting the Vision Zero Plan, or a goal date by which we hope to see it enacted, whether that be 2025 or a specific date in 2026. I want to know the city is taking this seriously and working toward implementing it by a specific date. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cassandra Masters.
Good morning. My name is Cassandra Masters. I live in Bloomfield, and I am the Associate Director with Age-Friendly Greater Pittsburgh. I am here today to voice my support of the city joining the Vision Zero movement, and I strongly urge a commitment to zero traffic fatalities by 2035. Since 2019, we have lost 245 Pittsburghers to traffic violence. 245 people of all ages and abilities who had their lives cut short because of a failure to invest in the infrastructure and policies needed to make our city safe and accessible for everyone. Between 2018 and 2022, drivers have seriously injured over 600 people. That is nearly one person every three days, and that's all of us. That could be any of us. Speaking for myself, when I'm walking, biking, or taking transit, I am mapping out which route is least likely to get me killed. That's not an exaggeration. Every single day when I leave my house, I am mentally doing the math, which route will get me there in one piece and alive. It's not which streets do I find more pleasant to walk down. It's not which streets will get me there fastest on a bike. It's which ones will get me there alive in one piece. I have heard from Pittsburghers of all ages, with and without disabilities, who are doing the same mental calculation every single day. Again, it's not thinking about which route do I prefer. I would much rather prefer to walk down Liberty Avenue in Bloomfield rather than Penn Avenue, because Liberty is a little bit more accessible and a little bit more pedestrian-friendly, because it's considered one of the first complete streets in the city. A safe, accessible, well-connected transit network is possible in Pittsburgh. Committing to Vision Zero by 2035 means more vibrant communities where all neighbors can access their community in full. It means everyone being able to get anywhere that they choose: the grocery store, community centers, dance parties, medical offices, work, anywhere we need to go. There's an endless list of what we gain when we can participate in our communities fully and safely. Age-Friendly Greater Pittsburgh is dedicated to making our region a better place to grow old. We believe everyone has the right to live, work, and move how they choose. A community that's built to welcome all users, ages, and abilities is a worthy investment. An investment in no more traffic deaths or injuries means our neighbors, whether they are eight or 80 years old, can access their communities in full for their whole life. I want to thank Councilperson Warwick and her office for introducing this, to Mayor Gany for his vocal support, and huge thanks to Bike Pittsburgh and Pittsburghers for Public Transit for all of the advocacy here. No more traffic deaths by 2035.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Boer.
My name is Eric Boer. I'm also the advocacy director of Bike Pittsburgh, a 3,000-member bicycle and pedestrian advocacy organization, also based in Lawrenceville. I'm here today to express our support for Councilperson Warwick's Vision Zero Resolution. This formal commitment to eliminating traffic fatalities and serious injuries, first for Pittsburgh, is long overdue, and we're happy to see that Council and Mayor Gany are taking road safety so seriously. As demonstrated in discussion from last week's post agenda, it's clear that you all care deeply about keeping Pittsburghers safe from the auto domination that we've inherited. I was here seven years ago testifying in front of this body in support of the Complete Streets ordinance and policy that you all passed. During the discussion on that bill, one question from a former councilperson has stuck with me since, when she asked if this resolution was going to be a bunch of fluffing words without action. But in those seven years, we've seen changes at all levels of government, including the creation of a new department, who have integrated the values that our streets are for more than getting around by car, especially since a quarter of Pittsburgh households have no access to a vehicle. One only needs to see the full bike racks in front of this building to see the real-world positive effects of this policy. We've seen that policies that you all enshry in this room not only create changes within the city of Pittsburgh, but they inspire surrounding communities, as demonstrated by the 12 other municipalities who have passed Complete Streets policies after you guys did. While we still think that setting a target date will make this bold goal even stronger, committing to eliminating traffic fatalities and serious injuries does take courage. All humans make mistakes in their daily lives. It's what makes us human, but those mistakes won't cost lives if we focus our efforts on investing in better street design and culture change. Committing to zero fatalities shows the leadership the city and region needs to save lives and ensure that no more families are upended. Thank you for your commitment to these goals.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsuver, and Nairobi, Kenya. I'm a 3D visual, aural, olfactory, soma artist. The Center for Global Studies module, the primary one, is of my construction, CGSII conference room, CGSII research ceiling, and I do faces. The Global Intelligence Society includes anybody who's committed to multifunctional and multinational contributions to solve our problems. I'm a GIS candidate for president 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. A concern of this council is cross-discipline achievement. On 30 January 2024, Ms. Strasburger called proclamy David Schifrin a Renaissance man. Really? Latin intelligence music reference, Carlos Santana, Michelle Branch, "Te estoy sintiendo", "I'm feeling you". "It is a complicated web you weave", she says, inside my head. Feeling like an RM. I do not. I have been called a Renaissance man, but I consider that to be an insult. It's a Eurocentric anachronism from the 14th century ACE, Renaissance, rebirth, Renaissance, from Italia, Renaissancemento. Renaissance man derives from the math-poor, music-non-prodigy, history-jewvy, neuroanatomist, visual artist, Bastardo, Bartram University interdisciplinary, Leonardo da Vinci. Da Vinci's unfinished, color-starved, info-poor, weave Mona Lisa self-portrait, I think Lillian Schwartz is correct, the emblematic world's greatest? I think not. Consider from Africa, Kenya, Swahili, Monko. In a self-portrait called Child's Play, Thandui Murio is centered, yellow-hatted, in an info-rich weave composed of five left and five right vertical columns, five top and five bottom horizontal rows, red, yellow, blue, brown, square bits comprising rows, columns, and diagonals framing her body, covered with more than 100 bits in wave strands. This is a very complex piece of work, and it doesn't get the kind of attention that I think we need to be able to give to people who are only in the United States. Ms. Warwick, you with your badass commitment, you think that's funny? Oh, yeah. See, she's laughing because I'm focusing on her because she's on her phone. That's what these people do, citizens. They don't listen, except when somebody comes in here with an athletic program. I find this completely reprehensible. She's a great artist.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Tiara Collins.
How you doing? Good morning. Good morning. My name is Tiara Collins. How's everybody doing today? I am here in support with Pittsburghers for Public Transit and Councilman Barbara Warwick and Ed Gany. We are here to support this Zero vision, and I'm here to support it for several reasons. My son was hit by a car on the bike several years ago, and he was left for dead. They never caught the person. The cameras where he was hit, that didn't work. So, I'm here today to ask you guys to support something that has been put in place from 2014, and we are now in 2024. And it says, "In coordination with Mayor Gany, Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, we will introduce a new resolution to City Council tomorrow, March 5, 2024, to enshare the commitment to Vision Zero and provide some specific steps that the city will take toward achieving that goal." I'm looking forward to those steps. I'm looking forward to y'all passing this bill, supporting her, supporting us, because we don't want to lose our children. We don't want to lose our friends or family, because everybody and someone they have known to been hit by a car, a bus, or something that's been on a bike. This has been going on for a long time. I feel like we have a wonderful set of people sitting in front of us who want to do the right thing, and I'm looking forward to that. So, I'm here to ask you, that I don't want my son, next time he gets hit, that he's not left for dead, for somebody to pull into a parking lot and get his phone and look and be able to find the last number call to call his sister down 911 for them to contact his mother to tell him that he was left unconscious. That's not a call that no mother wants, but this mother received that call. So, I'm here begging you to stop mothers having to receive the calls that I received, because I'll never forget that day. I'll never forget the fact that he couldn't remember me. He didn't know who I was, and he kept repeating himself. And that happened five years ago, and as of right now, it's still bringing tears to my eyes. So, I'm not asking you from someone who's just over here blowing smoke up your butt. I don't like to blow smoke. I've experienced it, and I don't want to experience it anymore. Thank you. Have a wonderful day. See y'all.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah E. Shirk.
My name is Sarah E. Shirk. I'm a constituent of Deb Gross, and I am here to express my support for council approving the Vision Zero Plan. I moved to Pittsburgh in 2015. I've been biking around Pittsburgh since 2016. I've met amazing people, built community, and gotten to know so many neighborhoods through experiencing this city through non-individual motorized transport. I love to bike. I work as a bike tour guide downtown. I do bike things socially. Sometimes I bike when I could drive. Sometimes I drive when I could bike. Regardless, every night when I come home and I stand in front of my bathroom mirror and I realize I haven't been hit by a car, feels like a miracle. Because some of my friends have been hit by cars while riding bikes. There are some of the most experienced cyclists I know, but even if they weren't, no one deserves to get hurt, especially if it can be prevented. I believe we're going to move our city in the right direction when we take thoughtful, systematic approaches to preventing collisions. And I think government will be living up to its highest potential to enact this thoughtful policy. I would add, I would love to see a due date of sorts for enacting the Vision Zero Plan, or a goal date by which we hope to see it enacted, whether that be 2025 or a specific date in 2026. I want to know the city is taking this seriously and working toward implementing it by a specific date. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cassandra Masters.
My name is Cassandra Masters. I live in Bloomfield, and I am the Associate Director with Age-Friendly Greater Pittsburgh. I am here today to voice my support of the city joining the Vision Zero movement, and I strongly urge a commitment to zero traffic fatalities by 2035. Since 2019, we have lost 245 Pittsburghers to traffic violence. 245 people of all ages and abilities who had their lives cut short because of a failure to invest in the infrastructure and policies needed to make our city safe and accessible for everyone. Between 2018 and 2022, drivers have seriously injured over 600 people. That is nearly one person every three days, and that's all of us. That could be any of us. Speaking for myself, when I'm walking, biking, or taking transit, I am mapping out which route is least likely to get me killed. That's not an exaggeration. Every single day when I leave my house, I am mentally doing the math, which route will get me there in one piece and alive. It's not which streets do I find more pleasant to walk down. It's not which streets will get me there fastest on a bike. It's which ones will get me there alive in one piece. I have heard from Pittsburghers of all ages, with and without disabilities, who are doing the same mental calculation every single day. Again, it's not thinking about which route do I prefer. I would much rather prefer to walk down Liberty Avenue in Bloomfield rather than Penn Avenue, because Liberty is a little bit more accessible and a little bit more pedestrian-friendly, because it's considered one of the first complete streets in the city. A safe, accessible, well-connected transit network is possible in Pittsburgh. Committing to Vision Zero by 2035 means more vibrant communities where all neighbors can access their community in full. It means everyone being able to get anywhere that they choose: the grocery store, community centers, dance parties, medical offices, work, anywhere we need to go. There's an endless list of what we gain when we can participate in our communities fully and safely. Age-Friendly Greater Pittsburgh is dedicated to making our region a better place to grow old. We believe everyone has the right to live, work, and move how they choose. A community that's built to welcome all users, ages, and abilities is a worthy investment. An investment in no more traffic deaths or injuries means our neighbors, whether they are eight or 80 years old, can access their communities in full for their whole life. I want to thank Councilperson Warwick and her office for introducing this, to Mayor Gany for his vocal support, and huge thanks to Bike Pittsburgh and Pittsburghers for Public Transit for all of the advocacy here. No more traffic deaths by 2035.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Boer.
Good morning. My name is Eric Boer. I'm from Lawrenceville. I'm also the advocacy director of Bike Pittsburgh, a 3,000-member bicycle and pedestrian advocacy organization, also based in Lawrenceville. I'm here today to express our support for Councilperson Warwick's Vision Zero Resolution. This formal commitment to eliminating traffic fatalities and serious injuries, first for Pittsburgh, is long overdue, and we're happy to see that Council and Mayor Gany are taking road safety so seriously. As demonstrated in discussion from last week's post agenda, it's clear that you all care deeply about keeping Pittsburghers safe from the auto domination that we've inherited. I was here seven years ago testifying in front of this body in support of the Complete Streets ordinance and policy that you all passed. During the discussion on that bill, one question from a former councilperson has stuck with me since, when she asked if this resolution was going to be a bunch of fluffing words without action. But in those seven years, we've seen changes at all levels of government, including the creation of a new department, who have integrated the values that our streets are for more than getting around by car, especially since a quarter of Pittsburgh households have no access to a vehicle. One only needs to see the full bike racks in front of this building to see the real-world positive effects of this policy. We've seen that policies that you all enshry in this room not only create changes within the city of Pittsburgh, but they inspire surrounding communities, as demonstrated by the 12 other municipalities who have passed Complete Streets policies after you guys did. While we still think that, in Allegheny County, while we still think that setting a target date will make this bold goal even stronger, committing to eliminating traffic fatalities and serious injuries does take courage. All humans make mistakes in their daily lives. It's what makes us human, but those mistakes won't cost lives if we focus our efforts on investing in better street design and culture change. Committing to zero fatalities shows the leadership the city and region needs to save lives and ensure that no more families are upended. Thank you for your commitment to these goals.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kelda Gorman.
I've watched cars in my neighborhood speed through stop signs and drive across multiple crosswalks without slowing down, even when I have the right of way and the walk pedestrian signal is on. Not only that, I've watched every kind of vehicle, from small, single occupancy, to very large, state-owned vehicles run red lights. I've seen drivers attempt to run cyclists off the road and even scream obscenities at them. Friends and acquaintances who walk often also report incidents like this. This paragraph would be much longer if I were able to include their experiences. I'm concerned about our pedestrian infrastructure. Many crosswalks do not have pedestrian signals, which makes crossing the street either difficult or impossible. Getting across the street often feels like a dangerous guessing game. Sometimes, pedestrian signals malfunction. Pedestrians shouldn't have to worry about these things. Walking to or from work or school should never feel life-threatening. Despite all of that I've just outlined, I believe in Pittsburgh's potential to become a safe, walkable city. I'm supportive of all efforts to make that a reality, and I think that Vision Zero is a great place to start. A commitment to zero deaths and traffic injuries is absolutely needed. Policy that eliminates traffic deaths and injuries must also center justice. We need to ask not only how we can make existing pedestrian infrastructure safer, but also be mindful of where such infrastructure doesn't yet exist. We should keep in mind that many people who walk and take public transit are low-income and/or disabled, and make both affordability and accessibility a policy priority moving forward. Our city sidewalks, crosswalks, and bus stops must be accessible. In order to make an effective commitment to Vision Zero, I believe that City Council should set a firm timeline for the fulfillment of these goals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our final registered speaker is Kendall Milan.
Hi, I'm Kendall. I'm a lifelong resident of the South Side Flats, and I'm speaking on behalf of Complete Streets at Pitt. We're a student organization at the University of Pittsburgh that focuses on making streets safer for pedestrians and bikers, specifically in Oakland. However, through outreach such as this, we are hoping to give our point of view on traffic safety in the entire city of Pittsburgh. Regarding Vision Zero, Complete Streets at Pitt fully and enthusiastically supports the resolution with a suggestion we feel may strengthen it. But before I speak about a possible resolution, I would like to share what Vision Zero means for me personally. On November 29th, shortly after I woke up, I remember opening the Complete Streets chat and reading that one of our members had seen blood on the street during his morning commute. The blood was Emily Watson's. She had been hit and killed by a driver while walking to work. In collaboration with Bike Pittsburgh, Complete Streets was able to organize a vigil for her. With every email we sent and ended with "Thank you for collaborating with us, we wish it wasn't under these circumstances," I found myself growing more disillusioned than ever. Because of the attention the vigil gained, we also happened to be connected to Beth Hoffman, who is a professor at Pitt. Her sister Emily Hoffman had been hit and killed by a driver while walking in February of 2023. Recently, I sat in Beth's office and listened to her speak about the complexity of getting justice for her sister while viewing multiple pictures of Emily. I didn't know Emily Watson, and I didn't know Emily Hoffman, but I didn't need to know them to grieve for them. At any point on my way to class, to home, or to a friend's house, their story could happen to me. At any point on my sister's way to class, to home, or to a friend's house, their story could happen to her. I want to feel safe while walking in my communities that I've grown up in. We deserve to feel safe in all of our communities. This is why it is our and many other pedestrian and biker safety-oriented groups' concern that the language of the current resolution does not address the urgency of the issue. While we're sure you're aware of the statistics regarding pedestrian and bike-involved incidents in the city, we would like to remind everybody that every day counts. That is why it's our request for Council to give the public a temporal goal. While we believe this resolution is a needed step, we also worry it has the possibility of fizzling out before a meaningful impact can be seen. By providing us with a year of completion, such as zero deaths by 2035, the Council may show the public their willingness to be held accountable. We thank the Council for their time and hope they may take our consideration to the amendment.
There being no further registered speakers, we'll now take comment from those in the audience wishing to speak. Are there any speakers wishing to come to the podium?
Good morning. My name is Howard H.P. Jackson, B.P. Grew up with NACP all my life. I'm sorry about the tragedies and the traffic that's been going on, but I came down here on a personal mission. Let's talk about the Mr. Rogers family show up the neighborhood. That exists, all right? And let's talk about 1857, March the 6th. Supreme Court said people of color weren't recognized as Americans. Now, what I witnessed yesterday in front of City Council, I seen abolitionists support a young man that was in the neighborhood that was riding a bike and got tasered by a police officer. Not one time, several times. One time is enough for any human being. Now, let's get back to Mr. Rogers' neighborhood. You know, history made a movie about the fellow. Now, here it is today. You know, we looking for the police to come in to our communities, all right, for trust and for protection. Now, here we was reinstated with a fellow that tasered somebody. Jimmy Rogers' house, okay? Neighborhood, abolitionists came down here and spoke for this man. We live in Pennsylvania, Quaker State. Nobody really knows that Pennsylvania was a free state. Been a free state all our lives, and they transformed the ignorance of the responsibility of humanity. Is that something to think about? And if this here passed about the police officer being reinstated, imagine all the youth of what's been going on since Johnny Gammon, Leon Ford, that's going on, et cetera. But we live in Pittsburgh, and we already know. Are we afraid of a change? Because I see abolitionists here, second-class citizens. I'm still recognized as a second-class citizen because I had experienced myself a few weeks ago. Now, I'm asking the Council to support the abolitionists, that the man lived in the neighborhood riding a bike. I want you to understand the crisis from '95, et cetera, on and on and on about brutality. We already know about the Leon Floyd, et cetera, et cetera, what's been going on in this country. Can Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, make a statement? Because the whole world is watching. They've been shocked of disappointments, anger. Think about what I just said, anger. Now, can we relieve the anger instead of somebody just getting smacked on the head? Now, I grew up in Mr. Rogers' neighborhood, too. Didn't you have your grandkids looking at? Love your neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Javon F. Brown, and I thank all the people that came and spoke to let them know what's happening in the community. I had also said to this Council that whenever you close streets, why can't you call the people in that community to ask them how you should make the detour? I live up at Katy War Hurvis, and I remember there was a delivery man. He was so mad, he was red, he was so mad, he said, cut off some streets. And he said, the way they cut it off, I almost got killed twice. And all I'm saying is, why can't you ask the people in the community how these streets should be cut off? But I'm going to change what I'm talking about today. I wanted to tell you about a woman that you may not never hear about. Her name was Linda Phillips. When I lived in a foster home up in Penn Hills, I met her because they had a big dog they called Jaja. And she was a friendly dog, but she would just come in people's yards. They'd be calling her and make her go back home. Well, Linda ended up getting married. She didn't finish school, 11th grade. She got married. Her husband took her to down south. Down south, he was a horish man and was messing with women in the area where she lived. She actually seen some of it. So, she said, she came back to Pittsburgh. She, in East Liberty, there was a building, but down at the bottom of the building, there was a man who made false teeth. So, she said, she was going back to school, she's going to learn how to make false teeth, which she did. And I read in the paper about a bird, I think it was macaw. He had broke his beak, and if they don't, they eat nuts, and if they don't eat the nuts, eat that, they will die. So, anyway, I read that they had made a false beak for this bird. So, I had called Linda. I said, Linda, and she said, that was me. She had made this false beak. This beak had to be strong enough to break Brazil nuts and different nuts, and it did. It saved that bird's life. But also, it was written that they're going to start in the United States, because those birds, a lot of birds do break their beak, and if they can't eat, then they die. But this is, her name was Linda Ann Phillips, and she started something that is going all through the United States. Now, when I called her and I said, Linda, and she said, that was me, she called me back. She said she went to her boss, and her boss had called the newspaper to make sure her name was in the paper and what she did. So, this is something, this is someone from Pittsburgh that's done something that's, she's dead now, though, but she's done something that is saving birds' lives. She said that it was a very hard job. It had the beak that looked like the rest of, okay, I'm finished.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Special Agent Sunshine. First thing I want to say is I return to sender any spellwork sent towards me 1 million times at this moment. The second thing I want to say is a prayer. Jesus, what a comfort to know you don't overlook me when I'm struggling with lack of thanks or acknowledgement from others. Remind me that you see everything I do. I can work diligently for you. The third thing I want to say is a scripture from Hebrews, Chapter 6, verse 10. God is not unjust. He will not forget your work and the love you demonstrated for His name by serving the saints and by continuing to serve them. This is a chorus I wanted to sing for all the homeless people in the world and anybody who is hungry and feels helpless. The sky's the limit, and I know if you keep on, just keep on pressing on. The sky's the limit, and I know that you can have what you want, be what you want. The sky's the limit, and I know if you keep on, just keep on pressing on. The sky's the limit, and I know that you can have what you want, be what you want. To my real parents, hiding what belongs to me, what God has for me, is for me. Whoever is being paid to hack my devices and stealing three or four hours of my Gmails and blocking my communications, stealing my mail, and job searches and opportunities, it won't be enough money to pay for your funeral if God takes you out. He sees you, and you're under judgment. Whoever was court-ordered to give me what belongs to me and didn't, you're under judgment. Nobody has given me anything. What you see, when you look at me, is the favor of God. I'm rich in the Spirit. No money, no job. God is my husband. He alone supplies me, all of my needs. Be mad about it. I will not be forced into settling out of court. If someone used my DNA to have a child, to steal what has my name on it, you're under judgment. I'm still living in a shelter with no money and no job, but working for the most high and getting justice for everyone going through narcissistic abuse is the best job I've ever had, and the blessings are eternal. You can never take them from me. Shout out to the real man out there that God chose just for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Any further speakers? There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our standing committee's agenda, starting with the Finance and Law Committee chaired by myself.
Read all four.
And we will read Bill 216, 217, 218, 219, and 220 all at once. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Bill 216, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Citron Alex P.C. for Legal Services in Connection with the Litigation Matter in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an Amount Not to Exceed $10,475.88 over one year. Bill 217, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Network Deposition Services for Legal Transcript Services for an Amount Not to Exceed $1,977.13 over one year. Bill 218, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Spillman Thomas &amp; Battle P.L.L.C. for Expert Legal Services in Connection with the Litigation Matter in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an Amount Not to Exceed $8,491.50 over one year. Bill 220, 219, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Michael D. McDowell Esquire for Arbitration Services for an Amount Not to Exceed $3,800 over one year. And Bill 220, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Adil Sharif Al-Gharari in an Amount Not to Exceed $3,400 over one year in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to his parked vehicle from a City ES recycling vehicle on April 21st, 2023.
Motion to hold all bills for executive session.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of holding all these bills listed for an executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
We will hold for executive session. Thank you. That moves us on to invoices. We have a motion to approve invoices?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second?
I have a question on the invoices. Under the mayor's office, there's a media monitoring service. I'm curious if they can tell us what that is.
Would you like to call our council budget director to the table to see if he is?
He's gesturing that he does not know.
Okay, okay. What's your pleasure, councilman? Would you like to?
If they can let us know what this is, I guess, and if we can hold, could we strike this and hold it till next week?
Motion to strike, let's see, would you like to make the motion to strike exactly?
Motion to strike the mayor's office TVI's Inc. to hold for a week.
Second.
Second, motion to second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will strike that, and is there, is any further discussion?
I just want to say, I think it's just media monitoring, like what's in the media, you know, daily. But I know you want to hear from them.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of invoices, say aye.
Aye.
Invoices are approved. That moves us on to P-cards. Can I have a motion to approve P-cards, please?
They're moved.
Second.
Motion to second. I have a couple of notes on P-cards. There's a suggestion to waive the rules for three purchases that Fire made to Uline Ship Supplies that total about $6,300. It's unclear whether they're separate purchases or they split the invoices, so we need a motion there. But I'll also note just some others that you might notice. DPW has six transactions to ready-to-go restrooms that total more than $5,000. They're all for separate rentals, separate parks. Rules do not need to be waived for those. Fire also has two transactions with National Registry EMT for the same amount of money. It's not a duplicate entry. And then DPW has two transactions for Bell Tax Company for the same amount. They are also not duplicates. Wanted to make that note. But we do need the motion, we do need to waive rules for the Uline Ship Supplies. We have a motion? Second? All those in favor to waive the rules to allow for a purchase over $5,000, say aye. Motion is approved. Motion to approve the P-cards?
Well, I just, just brief discussion.
Discussion, yes.
I just want to say, I think that, I see that there's a need for the porta-johns and all that stuff in their parks, but we also spend a lot of money renovating the restrooms and concession stands and buildings. And what we do in some of the neighborhoods is we pay a local person to open and close them, so we're not, I'd rather see the money go to a local person to open and close the restrooms, to make them available and accessible to everyone, to all people, because not all the porta-johns are accessible. And I just think, why are we spending this money when we just spent all the money renovating everything? I just want to, just a thought, I'd just like to see if there's a willingness to pay somebody to unlock and lock the restrooms, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of P-cards, please say aye.
Aye.
P-cards are approved. Okay, that moves us right along to Okay, that moves us right along to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill.
Bill number 212, Resolution, Amending Resolution 872 of 2021, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements for the continued implementation of the city's spay and neuter program by increasing the approved amount by $70,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $210,000 over three years.
Motion to approve, discussion, please.
Second.
With discussion, councilman?
Yeah, I guess we'd like to call maybe Director Schmidt. I'm not sure who would be best qualified to speak to this. You knew it was coming.
Good morning, Oui Schmidt, Public Safety Director.
Good morning, Charles showers, Manager of Personnel and Finance for Public Safety.
Thank, thank you both. I really just have one question. It was asked by a reporter. And first of all, I want to say, everybody's very happy that spay and neuter is going to be continued. I will tell you, from, at least from my district. You know, the feral cats have been a really big problem. So the question is, we knew that there was outside of residents from outside of the city of Pittsburgh that were taking advantage of this and, you know, using our taxpayer dollars to have their pets spayed or neutered. The question is, what have we done or how are we going to enforce that and make sure that it doesn't continue to happen?
So the legislation today is simply an extension of the previous contract that ended December 31st. Both of the providers and contractors have agreed to continue the program at the same cost as last year, as long as the only thing it's for right now is feral cat. Over the next six months, we already have the RFP pretty well drafted. We will continue to work towards a more long-term plan for two programs. One will be for feral cats. The other will be for pet cats and dogs. With those guide rails to reduce the opportunity for abuse, but also allow for a actually more robust program when it comes to feral cats that will allow folks to become a registered trapper. Previously, the program was if you were a trapper of wild or feral cats in your community, you would kind of get some folks together. Sometimes people would use a city resident and you would take a cat. They would take a cat, whatever, and they would each register, you know, file paperwork separately. The new program that we're working towards, which will be done when the new RFP and new contract comes in place, is around registering on a, as a treat and, or a trap and return for the feral cats. To certify that they will collect cats or trap cats from the city, take them for spay or neuter, and then return them and release them back into the same communities they were found in. We also want to ensure folks are not using cities' resources for spay and neuter to trap cats, take them to a rescue outside the city, and adopt them out for a fee. So that's where the registration for feral cats comes in. And then whenever it comes to pets, we're looking at various options there. But it will mainly be around registration, ensuring if it's a dog, that there's a valid current license for the dog. And then multiple, a little more thorough check around residency verification, as well as a statement from whoever it is taking the dog or cat, attesting that it is in fact their animal. And as well as a follow-up on those randomly. We can't, probably won't follow up on every single procedure, but randomly we'll follow up to see how things went, what, check, make sure the animal's okay. And verification, once again, that they still have the animal.
Right, so it sounds like you made the provisions to help, you know, at least curb the abuse in the future. The expansion that you said, when it goes to the cats and dogs, is that going to require more money or is that included in this?
That'll be included in the new contract. It's likely we will not use the entire $70,000 here. This was just because it was the existing contract. We just had extended it in theory for a year. We're hoping to have it much sooner than a year that this contract will end and we will have a new contract with whatever providers respond to the RFP that we're finalizing now.
Got it, got it. I guess dogs, who, the dogs have to be licensed.
And yes, in the state of Pennsylvania.
So it's easy to control that with dogs because they're licensed. And do they have the property owner's address, I guess, on their license?
They have the animal owner's address, yes.
Yeah, yeah, what did I say? Property. I don't mean to say dogs are property, they're animals. Sorry, so, okay, yeah, I was just making sure that we're taking measures to, you know, eliminate outsiders, people who live outside the city of Pittsburgh to come in and use our service when it's our taxpayer dollars. Thank you, Director. That's all for me, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill. Councilperson Warwick.
Yeah, thanks. So I just, because this came up at some community meetings. So just to kind of clarify a little bit, because I had with the trap and release program. Also, I have cats and it worried me when I first sort of learned that this, so if you have cats and they go outside, they should, if they're chipped, right, then they, so basically there are folks who come into the neighborhood and they will trap, right, feral cats. And then part of the process is they get their ear clipped, right? So then they bring it back. So that is how you can tell if a feral cat has been spayed or neutered is that the ear is clipped. And if you don't want that to happen to your cat, right, to have them trapped and taken and then, and they get brought back, right? But is to either chip them or have a collar. And, and also, my understanding is from, is that, you know, you can have a maximum of five animals in your house, right? Domestic animals, isn't that the limit?
By city code, yes.
By city code, right? And that includes all, not, not like five cats and five dogs, but like total animals by city code. Combination. Yeah, and, you know, I'm sure we all have a neighbor or two. I know, I know that I do, a neighbor who has cats and those cats have cats and there's just like lots of cats running around. So if, you know, even if it is a, like, you know, if it's a pet, that's still kind of a, I mean, it could get caught up in this program, which is ultimately for the best, I think. Anyway, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention. Thank you. That moves us on to, thank you for joining us. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilperson Warwick. And we're actually going to take, if you'll indulge me for a minute, Bill 243, along with Bill 244, which falls into Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley, together.
Bill 243, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Mosite's Construction Company for Costs Associated with Construction of the Charles Anderson Bridge Project, Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $48,477,777, reimbursable at 100%.
I didn't want to do it.
And Bill 244, Resolution, Amending Resolution 651 of 2023, Providing, which Provided for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for Costs Associated with the Charles Anderson Memorial Bridge Project, Where PWSA will be Responsible for Paying 100% of the Actual Expenses Involved in Certain Work to be Described in the Agreement at an Amount Not to Exceed $15,500. And Further Amending Resolution 723 of 2022, Effective December 27, 2022, Entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023 Through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Charles Anderson Bridge Tip by $15,500.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second? Any discussion? I actually would like to call the representatives from DOME up to just discuss this bill briefly. Thank you, welcome. I wanted to give you the opportunity, I thank you for your patience. I know that some of you have to get to another meeting. But I wanted to give you the opportunity to discuss some of the good news about the Charles Anderson Bridge. We know that this is a bridge that no one wants to see closed, but wanted to give you the opportunity to discuss some of the progress that you've made and the good news here.
Thank you. So my name is Kim Lucas and I'm the Director for the City's Department of Mobility and Infrastructure.
Eric Sutler, Chief Engineer in Mobility and Infrastructure.
And as the council member alluded to, the Charles Anderson Bridge, which is currently closed, we've identified opportunities to expedite the reopening of that bridge. We've come before you a few times before to talk about some of those opportunities because we need council to approve some of the agreements and other documents associated with that. And I'll let Eric talk a little bit more about the request for waiving of Rule 8. That comes with some of those.
Sure, thank you. So as you all know, just the backstory, you know, we had to close this bridge abruptly winter of last year when we got some bad news from a bridge inspection. And we took immediate action to do that, to ensure the safety of the public. This is a very busy bridge, so the traffic detour, you know, people have been managing, but it's, it's a tough one. It does, you know, cause some traffic problems. So at that point, we, we worked in collaboration with, you know, us, the mayor's office, everyone in the city, along with PennDOT and FHWA, to look at what we could do to speed the process up. The bridge had been in the preliminary engineering design phase for a couple of years at that point. And we were making progress, but still had several years of design to get through. Collaborating with PennDOT and with the designer, we were able to expedite the design effort and push through the rest of preliminary engineering, receive our environmental clearance at the beginning of June last year, and then really push through final design in about six months instead of what would typically be at least 18 months. And that was really a team effort by, by all those folks that I mentioned to just really prioritize the project. We didn't have any emergency resolutions or anything like that. We still had to follow the process as, as the process exists. But we just pushed through it very quickly and we're very appreciative of that. As a result of those efforts, the project went out to construction bids at the end of, or in January, and we opened bids on February 29th. And we have a low bidder, Masite's Construction Company. The cost of the project's a little over $48 million. It's a big project. And one of our pieces of legislation that we, we have today is to allow us to enter into that construction, construction contract. As with everything, you know, we're trying to push everything and squeeze as much time out of the project as we can. So typically, we allow three months from the time that we open bids to the time that we expect to give the contractor notice to proceed. That gives us time to do our contracting, get approval from, from this body and all those various steps. For this project, we requested approval from PennDOT to reduce that three months to two months. And as, you know, we laid out a schedule of how we are going to get from point A to point B to make sure that happens. So we are anticipating giving the contractor notice to proceed on April 29th. You know, one of the pieces of that is trying to make the process, you know, compress it as much as possible, which is why we have requested, yesterday, we requested the waiver of Rule 8 for that. Just to, you know, every week that we can save is, is one extra week in the process. And we have two pieces of legislation. The one is for the construction contract. The other one, there's a small amount of work, $15,000 worth of work that PWSA will be paying for as part of the project. We submitted legislation in the fall to, to allow us to enter into that contract. We didn't have the dollar value of it at that time and we needed to move the legislation, once again, trying to get things in place so that we could get through the process. So now we're just going back and amending that to add the dollar value, which will then allow us to spend that money as part of the construction contract. So I mean, that's, that's kind of a big picture of where we're at. And I don't know what other questions you might have.
I have no further questions. Any further discussion from members? Councilman Coghill.
Just quickly, so it sounds like you're ahead of schedule with this.
We are ahead of the original schedule, absolutely. And we are on the, we're on track on the accelerated schedule.
Right, right, right. Well, I guess really what I wanted to ask, you know, as far as the maintenance goes, to ongoing maintenance, simple thing like clearing the drains. We know that we have been neglectful probably for the last 50 years in doing so. So we take that on ourselves. Our Public Works Department goes out and actually clears the drains. It's like cleaning your gutters on your house, right? If you don't do it, the water's just going to stay on there and nothing deteriorates more than water. It's, you know, so standing water or clogged drains, we do that on a regular basis now. We've kind of.
Yes, the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure has taken that on. And in the last couple of years now, we are doing it. We're on a schedule. We are currently doing it with our bridge on-demand contractor. And they're, they're actually working on some bridges right now. And then, you know, as you know, last year's budget, or this year's budget, includes additional staff to start allowing us to do that work in-house so that we don't have to rely on contractors for a lot of it.
Right, our Public Works, right? I mean, they stop on the bridge, clear the drain. It's the easy thing to do, I would think. It's just a matter of getting.
It is. It's a matter of having the people and the equipment to do it and, and just got to make it happen. And, you know, those little things really do make a difference in the long run.
Oh, my gosh, do they ever. Even on our roadways, you know, the catch basins, they get clogged. A lot of them aren't our responsibility, I see. But nothing creates a flood and damage more than just water, still water.
Absolutely, water and saltwater.
Yeah, mix our salt in with it, right?
Yeah, right.
Although we haven't needed much of that this year, but thankfully. But, okay. Now, that's it for me, Madam Chair. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, understanding that you are now operating on, on an accelerated schedule and, you know, and normal times often, you know, use that roadway and that bridge coming, coming from Squirrel Hill. Given there is an accelerated timeline, is there an expected, you know, completion date at this point? And, you know, at least a ballpark timeline at this point? And if so, what is that?
Yes, there is. And it's, it's still going to be a long construction project. As I said, we accelerated the design process to get us to construction as fast as possible. But due to the complexity, so this is a historic trust bridge, as many of you would be aware. We're doing complete rehabilitation of it. We are putting a whole new concrete deck on it, new steel stringers supporting the deck, a lot of steel repairs to the trust, cleaning and painting the entire thing. Also picking up the adjacent Panther Hollow overpass, which is over by, by the pool in Shenley Park, where Panther Hollow Road comes down. It's kind of almost like a little mini interchange in there. We're getting that. We're putting a new superstructure beams and deck on that bridge as well. We didn't want to end up, that was, it was starting to show its age. We didn't want to end up in a situation where we reopen the road for this bridge and then have to close it again in a couple of years for that. So we're getting it all done at once. And that's a long way of saying it's going to take a while. And our current reopening date is the end of 2026. So it's about a two and a half year construction project.
And may I just add, so I brought with me a prop. This is five pages. This is the process map that it takes to get through all of our capital projects that have PennDOT oversight. So this, this five-page document that outlines every single step between the city and Pennsylvania Department of Transportation has 71 weeks as the cumulative timeframe that it takes to get through these capital projects. As you know, for every city dollar, DOME, of DOME projects, there's over a dollar of external funding. And when that comes from federal highways, it comes through PennDOT. So all of that to say is that we're taking the Charles Anderson Bridge as an opportunity to look at this process map and to see how much time we can squeeze out of it. Because we hear every day about the desire, and we have the same desire, of getting these bridges open, getting our projects done as quickly and efficiently as possible. And so just to share that, this is something that we hope to be able to take lessons on for, for additional projects as well.
That's all.
Thank you. Council, Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Just briefly, I just, I recall seeing a list of the bridges that will be done. And I know it's in our budget, you know, what you want to do. But is there a timeframe? I swear I saw a timeframe somewhere.
So we have a lot of projects that were.
I know. Can I just say, you do, and you are doing an amazing job, I want to say that. Because I know you get a lot of grief and a lot of, you know, aggravation. This woman next to me sometimes used to. And now she's chair of the committee, so she's doing good. But I will say that I, I think it, you know, holding your feet to the fire is because we get concerns from our constituency and we want to make sure that we're doing what's right by everybody, as I know you do too. But I want to say you are doing a great job. But I would like, just like to know if there's any kind of timeframe with some of the projects.
You know, we, we have, you know, tentative schedules and tentative let dates for all of our projects. And I could certainly get you specific information about them. You know, in general, from the day, you know, the start of a project, like. You know, in general, from the day, you know, the start of a project, like when we identify the project, before we have any agreements in place, we go out, we get money, you know, it can take, you know, upwards of a year to even up to two years to get the money, get the consultant selected, get under contract, get all that going. The engineering phase can take, between preliminary and final design, can take, I would say, three years or it can go longer if there's complications, three to five years, and then construction can be, you know, a year or two depending. So it can add up very easily.
I'd just like to see it all, but I know that we're waiting for the, you know, anticipated West End Bridge reconstruction, but I think I'll be dead before that happens. But, I mean, I'm going to be honest, but I know that people are meeting and talking about it now. But I remember, I was just telling my husband yesterday how I remember Bill Paduta had a plan. It was something for 2080. And I'm thinking, none of us will be here in 2080. I mean, you're kidding me. So I just don't understand why we waste time with some things that aren't going to happen and like, let's do the things that need to be done now, that kind of stuff. But I do want to thank you for the work that you're doing in our district and across the city of Pittsburgh. You can see, I wish you had the Montigny line on your list to do. Thank you. Thank you for the work you do.
Thank you. Councilperson Warwick.
I just, this is a very brief question, but, you know, a lot of the bridges have just this really beautiful, you know, that like beautiful green steel, whatever, you know, is that, does that have to go away? I mean, I know this one, you're redoing the deck. Is there, is that part of the consideration is to try and preserve? It's just so pretty in so many places.
Or reuse it.
So, I mean, if you're talking about like the steel, the superstructure, like the trust, for example.
Yeah, like, I mean, I grew up in LA, right? So like the, like, I just think that ugly, those freeways, like, it's just like concrete. It's, you know, and it's so pretty to have the steel.
Yeah, no, the steel, I mean, a lot of these projects, if we're keeping the steel, you know, giving it a fresh coat of paint is extremely important. And, you know, there's opportunity in there to really make it look good. Most of, most of that stuff is steel as opposed to like copper, for example. We'll get a nice green patina over time and that's really beautiful. But most of our bridges, it should be whatever color was painted. And if it's starting to get rusty, then we should get a fresh coat of paint on it.
Well, what I mean is like, when we're redoing these bridges, like, is there a, because I know sometimes it's concrete, like, it's got to be concrete, but is that, like, is...
Well, there is a historic preservation component to, when we evaluate our projects. And that actually leads to a lot of the time lag for some of the projects is just determining whether or not the bridge will, you know, need to be preserved in its somewhat current aesthetic.
Thanks.
Sure.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 243 and 244, please say aye.
Aye.
These bills have preliminary approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That moves us back up to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee and on to Bill 222.
Bill 222, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Southwestern Pennsylvania Corporation in the Amount of $32,500 for a Comprehensive Safety Action Plan for Allegheny County and the City of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill 223.
Bill 223, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the North Avenue Signals and the Safety Project and Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $2,500,000, reimbursable at 80%, and the Municipal Sheriff Commonwealth Incurred Costs at a Cost to the City of Pittsburgh not to exceed $20,000.
Motion to approve.
Second discussion.
Second discussion. Councilman Wilson.
Yes, I have the director come to the table, please. Just want to make sure the steps are calculating on your watch today, you know. All right. You can just state your name and...
Kim Lucas, Director for the City's Department of Mobility and Infrastructure.
Just want to get an update on this. So I see this is 2.5 million. Just want to know what the, what this will cover, so. And I'm aware of the design, but I just want to know what percent of the project it says cover.
So this will cover the Arch to Cedar along North Ave signal replacements. And so signal replacements at a number of those intersections within that span and the associated pedestrian improvements as well to the street's shape. So that can include concrete bump outs and paint and other things that will make the crossings safer in that stretch.
Okay, great. It was a great meeting to get an update on the design. Looking forward to some of the, some of the recommendations that I brought up, you know, to continue to middle, you know, to include middle, north and middle as just, you know, something that should be on our radar. And I know your staff was looking into the possibility of, even though the money's tight, the possibility of how much we can do at that intersection. I think there was a couple of other things, but that's one that's sticking out to me. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Been a lot of alcalies here today.
Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The affirmative recommendation, thank you, Bill 224.
Bill 224, Resolution Amending Resolution 277, Effective June 26, 2020, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter Into a Second Amendment to the Agreement Between the City of Pittsburgh and Passack Plus MTR for Professional Landscape Architectural Services for Arsenal Park Phase 1 Design to Change the Fund Sources in the Contract. The Net Change of the Amendment is Decreasing the Total Not to Exceed Amount by $2,862 from $544,174 to $541,312.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 229.
Bill 229, Resolution Adopting the Goal of Reducing Traffic Fatalities and Serious Injuries in Road Traffic in the City of Pittsburgh to Zero and Endorsing the Vision Zero Strategy to Achieve This Goal.
Motion to approve with discussion?
Second.
Second with discussion. Councilman Warwick.
Can we have the DOMI team come up and mayor's team as well? Whoever fits. And I thought as well, we could also maybe touch on the SPC Safety Act, just since I assume they're tied together. Before we start, I want to say, you know, my name is on this, but this is very much DOMI and the mayor's office, right? Stephanie, I just want to make sure that full credit is given where it's due. So thank you all for all your work on this and Lee, go ahead. If members have questions, yeah.
Councilman McCaw.
I'll start, but first of all, I want to thank all the speakers that came down today in support of this project and thank you, Councilwoman, work for leading it. I guess my only question is this, my district, and I don't say this proudly, but we are, I think I'm the only district that does not have bike lanes. And it's not because we're not, I don't have bike enthusiasts. It really comes down to, a lot of it comes down to the narrow roads that we have. And I've been talking to Bike Pittsburgh and we're looking at some avenues that we could possibly, you know, fit that in. I don't, one negative with my district, it's hard, you cannot ride a bike downtown unless you can get over Route 51 safely. As you know, we looked into many possibilities there, including the Wabash Tunnel.
Which is not in his district.
I know, I tread lightly when I come over to our borders. But, you know, Port Authority was, you know, they didn't like the liability on it, they were not going to do it. And now we're taking that bridge down anyway that kind of crossed over. So, so I guess my question is, you know, and maybe it's different in some other districts where it's more flat, but my district, it's so hard to find a spot to put a bike lane in. I was already recommending a couple of areas and it's like, it's like one way as it is. Little mountain roads going up, you know, and if two cars are coming sometime, most of the time a car has to pull over. And so I just feel like I don't have the infrastructure, the topography to fit such lanes. I'd like to find that, and we're working on it with, like I said, again, like Bike Pittsburgh and the mayor's office will work on trying to, you know, envision where we can do it. But is it just, is it because it's more challenging in my district than some other districts? I guess, yeah, any comments?
Kim Lucas, Director for the City's Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. So as you've identified, there are lots of things that go into consideration when we're talking about bike infrastructure, the physical space, demand, network connectivity. If folks want to see where the vision is for the bike connections in the city, I invite you to take a look at the Bike Plus Master Plan that's on DOMI's website. I can't recall your district off the top of my head. In that plan, but what it does show are 120 miles of new and improved on-street bike facilities and an additional, I believe, 25 miles of off-street facilities. So that is our 10-year vision for the city that was published, I think, in summer of 2020 in coordination with Bike Pittsburgh and after a number of community meetings. And so you are not forgotten and it's probable that we're working on it.
No, I'm glad you say that. I mean, and it's not, I know I'm not forgotten. I've been in talks, you know, with Bike Pittsburgh and again, many bike enthusiasts in my neighborhood. I just, I just worry, like, some of the streets that we're going to try to put them on it, you know. And again, we don't want to exclude people from, you know, riding their bike. It is unfortunate that we cannot ride our bikes to downtown Pittsburgh. But, but I just worry that's, you know, it's dangerous just because of the skinny, narrow, tight roads that I have.
If I may also add, and I think Angie has something to add as well. So you're, you know, when I hear safety, we're not, we don't design for one mode. We design for all users of the roadway with a priority and that's what the team will talk about today on vulnerable road users. So people outside of cars who are traveling. So those may be pedestrians, they may be people using bikes, they may be people trying to get to a transit connection. When we don't have space to do a dedicated bike facility, meaning a bike lane or a protected bike lane, there are still ways to make those roads safer. And when we make those roads safer, they're going to be safer for everybody who's using them. And so those are the types of opportunities, we call those neighborways in a lot of neighborhoods, that we would probably see in an environment where the street width isn't conducive to doing a dedicated bike facility. But our goal is to make our streets safer for everybody regardless of how they're choosing to travel.
Yeah, I've often thought, you know, it's probably best in my district to use the side streets, the back streets that run parallel along with the main avenues. It just seems like, you know, a lot less traffic there. And you could have a bike lane right down the middle, just bring awareness and, you know, everybody is conscious of it. But, and I'm not, I'm not complaining that I don't get the bike infrastructure or bike lanes because I just want to move slow on it, make sure that it's safe and, you know. Adapting it into my district is, again, a challenge, I think. So, so I look forward to trying to figure out how we can do that in a safe manner. But I don't envy that people have to figure that out. It's not an easy task. Again, I'm speaking just for my district. I see them all over the city and they fit well and I don't see a problem for them. But, okay, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith.
So I think there's a couple of things. One, I'd like to see, know exactly what the plan is and there'll be conversations with the residents and with the community before implementing anything, correct? Okay, I want to make sure people understand that part before I vote. And then part of this is for me, is we can talk all the time about putting in, you know, different bike lanes and different ways for people to access, you know, the city and just to get across. But if we're not enforcing some of our own laws, then we are really failing, you know, any plan we put in place is going to fail. And I really feel like we are not enforcing our parking. And Sheridan, every week people are complaining because there's a business, a building with business, people double park, but there's also a senior citizen high-rise nearby where people are using wheelchairs. There's a school across the street where people are trying to access the busway. And there's just not a lot of enforcement of, and I get it. I mean, they want, they're trying, people are trying to build relationships in the community. They're trying to do things that are positive. But it's actually building up a lot of tension in the community because of the lack of enforcement in that area. And that's just one case. But when we talk about bike lanes and different things, I actually talked to Bike Pittsburgh, the way our community could go forward is I think we need to work with the state on Banksville Road, which goes, you know, all over the place. And I think that it's definitely in need of some renovations and I think it would be great to talk to, you know, your partners at the state level on some of that. Because that would take both of our districts, you know, and through town. But we're also working on the bike trail, or the trolley trail in the West End. Could you give me this update on that?
Let me get that for you.
Okay, thank you. And while you're looking, I'll talk about, I'll just, I'll say that we're also talking about the West Carson Street. And I think that back a while ago, Henry Pyatt went up and over with a machete, I might say. He had, cutting down weeds. I could just imagine what people saw when he scared the heck out of them when he came into the park. But anyway, but he came up and he said that there's only two parcels up and over on West Carson where we could find ways to access, like either a walking trail, bike trail or something. And it's not a lot of money because we own almost all the parcels, except for two, it's my understanding there were two. So if we just maybe look into some of those ways to expand the bike walking trails, I think it would be amazing because they also connect to, you know, public transit. So I think it's great.
It might take a minute on that update, but...
Okay, okay. I'll wait for you to come back on that. Okay. I'll just say, I started that trolley trail 20 years ago this year, 20 years ago with just three residents and a couple, just a couple of people. But first I got elected, Luke Raven still didn't like me, he held it up. Then he started moving it. Then Bill Paduta got in, he didn't like me for five years, he held it up. Then he liked me at the end, he started moving it. Now, the mayor got in, it's held up again. I'm just going to say, I'm seeing a pattern here, okay? I want the trolley trail done for the residents. I don't, I'll probably never use it, but they definitely will. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hello, I just want to ask the obvious question. So we have Bike Plus Plan, we have Complete Streets and Vision Zero. Can you explain the difference of what's happening here?
Sure, I'll go ahead and start. This is Angie Martinez. I'm Assistant Director with DOMI. I oversee our Policy Planning and Permitting Bureau. You're right, Councilwoman Wilson, we have several initiatives sort of under the umbrella of Complete Streets. We have our Complete Streets Advisory Group. We have a series of programs that I think fall under the Complete Streets umbrella. So our Traffic Homing Program, our Safe Routes to School Program, even our Sidewalk Repair Program, which are all sort of related to, you know, increasing safety for all users and building out a multimodal transportation system. The Vision Zero program is different in that it represents a collective goal and breaking down of barriers between multiple departments in the city and outside the city that might have a role in actually moving forward some of the recommendations and projects that we identify in these, in these other series of plans. So, you know, the items that were in front of council earlier today about Charles Anderson Bridge and others, I think are really illustrative to how, and even the comments from Councilwoman Kail Smith about enforcement, you know, roadway safety, complete streets are not a purely engineering or design solution. We really have to make sure that we're working with our partners in public safety, our partners in enforcement. Anybody who's sort of, has a role in making sure that DOMI business can be done, has a role then in Vision Zero to actually make sure that all of these departments are together and working towards breaking down the barriers that exist so that we can move forward in the projects and programs that actually result in safer streets.
So what would be the first project that you would undertake under Vision Zero?
Would you like? Councilman Wilson or not, I'm Lisa Frank. I'm the City's Chief Operating and Administrative Officer. One of the ways I would also distinguish the Vision Zero and the things that are in the legislation is the, I guess, the Incident Review Committee. So, so one of the ways that we know we can start to uncover the things that are blocking us from doing the project, so you're asking what's the first project, and that's important, and Angie's going to answer that. But, but I also think that this process is going to help us do that prioritization. It's going to help us figure out, if there's a, if there's a, if there's a crash, then the Incident Review Committee comes together and just analyzes it, what happened there? Is it the intersection? Is it the signaling? Is it, this has been on our list for a long time and we've had two crashes. What is the holdup? It doesn't matter if it's a capital holdup or if it's a design holdup or if it's a need-to-do education holdup or whatever it is, so that the work of the committee begins to influence how we're choosing, how we're directing our resources, because we know we can't do everything all at once. So I would just say already, and I know you heard this at the Post Agenda, already the analysis that people have done has helped us to isolate the high injury network from all the other streets. And that, that then begins to tell us, how do we, how do we dedicate those resources so that every time there's a crash, we're figuring out what is the bottom of the... so that every time there's a crash, we're figuring out what is the bottom of that crash? And let's not have that crash happen again for the same reason. Now you can answer the project question.
Yes, I, I, I think that set me up really well. So don't think of Vision Zero as a set of projects. Think of Vision Zero as this larger umbrella of encompassing multiple programs, relationships, and projects that are part of that. And the mandates that are in the Vision Zero ordinance are to establish a working group that's going to convene all cross-departments to be talking about these issues, to break down the barriers. And then as Chief Frank just said, the Fatal Injury Crash Response Group to help us better understand these incidents that are happening on, on city streets as to inform better city work to address these things and mitigate them, prevent them in the future. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, so you don't have a particular project right now, but these two groups you mentioned was the Fatal Crash Group and then what's the other one?
We're calling it, let me use the exact wording here, Vision Zero Working Group. So.
Between those two entities, that's going to guide the work that DOMI does with other departments to accomplish as least amount of.
The goal, the, the Vision Zero, um, what is the word? Strategy or goal aspiration is to reduce to zero the number of fatalities and serious injuries on, in the city of Pittsburgh on our roadways, regardless of whose roadways they are. So not just those under the jurisdiction of DOMI, but also those that are owned by PennDOT or County. And so in order for us to do this, as we've said, this is not purely DOMI-designed projects that will get us to zero. It's making sure that we're working with our enforcement partners, our partners at the state, our partners at the regional metropolitan planning organization.
So these are two new groups?
Yes.
And then these two groups, will they be appointed by the mayor? Or is it a structured, how is it structured?
Those conversations are happening right now. There is some direction in the ordinance. So we call out public safety, we call out IMP because there's data work that needs done as a part of this. We call out OMB. And then there are two places, or excuse me, there are two representatives appointed by city council that will be on the Vision Zero Working Group. And our goal is, once this ordinance is passed, to actually set up that group. And so we have a target date of convening that group by the end of the second quarter. And we can share with city council the list of participants for the working group. We don't have that right now because today is to first adopt the ordinance, make the mandate to establish the working group, and then we, we work from there. We also have the Complete Streets Advisory Group, which is our sort of public-facing body. And so I think we're also exploring how we're going to build communication and overlap between that existing body and then this new interdepartmental working group around roadway safety and complete streets.
Thanks for walking me through that. Is there one, can you point to one example where you're like, aha, this is why we need to go further and have Vision Zero more than the Complete Streets Commission?
Most definitely. I think that we have a tremendous amount of energy and interest in wanting to make sure that our streets are safer. And that interest is coming not just from city departments that are working on this, so it goes beyond DOMI. DPW is out there building sidewalk. City Planning is, you know, going to be doing a comprehensive plan. Neighborhood Services is out there, you know, every single day, talking to constituents about their concerns of safety. We have advocacy groups that are approaching all of us, right, like bringing these concerns together. And so what Vision Zero does, I think, is it creates a place where we're able to take all these people who have a shared goal and we actually organize and direct those efforts so that we can elevate them to achieve, achieve something greater. And so for now, it's DOMI that's sort of taking the lead on being the champion for this because we are the DOT and we have street design and people sort of look to us first. But I think we're first to admit that we can only go so far with engineering and design and we have to get other people at the table if we're serious about addressing roadway safe, safety comprehensively. We can't respond to every single 311. You guys know the backlog we have in our Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. More is needed. And this is one of the ways we build capacity is by taking this Vision Zero directive and bringing all of the departments that have a role in assisting DOMI and the public in achieving this goal to the table and committing them to, to helping us problem solve.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Mosley.
Thank you. Thank you for being here today. I just had a couple of questions. The first one was a little bit in line with my two colleagues, Councilman Cock Hill and Councilwoman Kail Smith. You know, understanding that in certain parts of the city, there are constraints with the amount of bike lanes and other, you know, ways you can kind of create a multimodal infrastructure throughout the city. Is there like a shortlist or a target list of potential, as, as Councilwoman Kail Smith, you know, alluded to, unused or abandoned right-of-ways and things to expand the trail system? I actually met with Scott Bricker yesterday and he talked about, you know, you know, the anxiety that obviously, you know, created the Vision Zero plan actually prevents a lot of people around the city from riding their bike through the city. You know, I ride my bike through the city. I ride my bike on, on the trails as well. You know, I, I do tend to, you know, have an adventurous spirit and I like to live on the edge. So, you know, I do ride, you know, throughout the city on the city streets. But I know that many don't. And so understanding that, that we could actually increase the amount of bicyclists around the city if we expand that, that, that infrastructure, you know, that doesn't have bicyclists compete, you know, with automobiles, you know. In your analysis, are there, you know, places in the city that are low-hanging fruit that we can acquire as far as right-of-ways and things like that to expand the trail system similar to the Gap Trail along the South Shore?
So I can start and then Angie can talk a little bit about some of our planning work around the, expanding the trail system. So we do that, exactly what you're describing. We have streets in the city that have been closed mostly due to landslide activity that have been closed in some cases for many, many years. I think the Sylvan Avenue Trail is an example of a place that was closed many, many decades ago and is reopening as a trail that will not allow motorized vehicles on it for transportation. And so there have been instances today where we are doing that. But we're also looking, you know, I mentioned the Bike Plus Master Plan that identifies some opportunities for trail expansion with a comprehensive plan. You know, that's a much longer range plan and a much larger effort and it's ostensibly land use work. And that is going to probably identify more opportunities like you're describing. And then Angie, if you want to talk a little bit about the trail plan.
Yeah, and maybe before I get to that specifically, I will say that in the city as a whole, I think we're in a moment of existential question about who is leading in trail development. So we have a amazing riverfront trail system and lots of trails and parks as well, which are managed by different entities. We also know that there's opportunities where we can be connecting some of these off-road trails, building new trails. But there's not been sort of one champion of this. It's kind of been Riverlife, Friends, Bike Pittsburgh advocating. DOMI is starting to pick up more and more trail development work as we're actually like repaving portions of the trail or building trails in certain cases. And so this is like a very active and timely discussion. And again, I think this is very similar to the Vision Zero initiative. This is not purely a DOMI sort of initiative. It's environmental work as well. It's understanding, you know, property easements, working with railroads, private property owners, land entitlements, all sorts of things. So the good news is that DOMI is leading a Three Rivers Heritage Trail Maintenance and Management Plan right now, which is going to, which is bringing together all of our riverfront and trail stakeholders, I think really for the first time, to talk about trails in a more comprehensive way so that we can maybe sort of start to get ahead of the curve in this. There are a couple of, I'll call them links in trail development that DOMI certainly has on our radar that we would like to explore feasibility studies for, but nothing lined up at this point in time. But, you know, were we to actually seek a grant or get a project to do trail feasibility study, we would be, you know, we'd most likely be back here again sharing that with you guys.
Sure, again, and my second question, in many ways you may have already, you know, answered it as far as, you know, the important steps that we have to take to ensure that, you know, we expand, you know, kind of multimodal, you know, multimodal infrastructure, you know, beyond just, you know, motor vehicles to, to certain parts of the city. Obviously, I know, you know, in the part of city I live in, I know we have, you know, a large concentration of multimodal infrastructure. But, you know, beyond the kind of identifying, you know, you know, some of the challenges that Councilman Cock Hill, you know, raised, you know, what do you see, you know, moving into the future of ways that we can kind of work together, you know, across the city and not necessarily being so provincial about the part of cities we're from, but ensuring that, you know, this multimodal infrastructure, you know, can be enjoyed in all corners of Pittsburgh? Is there, you know, do you have any particular thoughts, you know, about, you know, how do we kind of start moving in that direction?
It starts, it starts with planning and these are, like I said, these are conversations that are active. I've, we've had them with DPW, we've had them with city planning, trail development, especially for trails that are off-road. So DOMI, you know, manages public right-of-way. Many trails are not public right-of-way. They're actually easements. So who then is the best entity to be leading in the study, you know, doing the entitlement work, building the trails, you know, they're, we recognize they are key to our mobility system, but they're also recreational as well. So I, I'm not proposing we need like a whole new department of trails or anything like that, but certainly it's going to be interdepartmental.
And if I, if I may, I think you're hitting on a really great point of what we hope to come out of the Vision Zero Working Group. You know, trails, off-street dedicated infrastructure is the safest infrastructure for people who are not in cars because there are no cars there, of course. And this interdepartmental working group, as Angie has highlighted, trails touch so many different entities and we have lack of clarity around that. So I think that could be one of the work products that come out of that working group is really saying, okay, who's going to own this? How are we going to move it forward?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, so I just wanted to say, yeah, just with regards to the working group. I mean, this is really, it's, it's DOMI who's sitting here. We also have the mayor's office. But this is really, like, everybody will be involved. That's the purpose of the working group, to bring folks together. And I mean, just right off the bat, a few things that, you know, so the, the, you know, the Fatal Crash Response Team, right, that's, that's one thing, right? So to get that team assembled, so when there's a fatal crash, you know, it's to figure out, you know, and everybody has a role, right? So, uh, public safety, right? What role do they play on that team? City planning, what role do they play with council, for example? What can we do with legislation here in the city, right? Is there red light legislation we can do, you know, with regards to our traffic rules here in the city? What do we need to go to our state partners, right? PennDOT has the highest number of, of high injury network, I mean, of high injury network crashes, right? So what is the role that they play? And is it us that works with them? Is it, is it the mayor's office that works with them? What about getting the cameras, right, like the red light cameras? So that's all stuff that we've been talking about, you know, in, in sort of a, maybe a little bit more siloed or scattered, or, oh, we should really do that, like, we should really do that thing. But it's like, this working group is going to actually be like the, you know, like, okay, you do this one, you do that one. And, and I know too, one thing that I'm very excited about, which is sort of on the, we're going to be working on, and I, I know that Councilwoman Strasberg and Councilwoman Charland are also excited about this one, is this neighborhood sort of toolkit, right? So, you know, people call us and, and, and the reality is that we can, we're focusing on the high injury network roads for infrastructure improvements, right? But we get a million calls asking for, oh, can we get a speed home here? So now if we have this neighborhood toolkit, it, you know, it says, hey, once, once we create it, hey, if you have a block captain, right, we can work with Neighborhood Services, then here's something you can do, you know, just sort of things that they can do to raise awareness because awareness is huge, right? I feel like, you know, special events may also have a role to play, right? Like more events where we're just closing off the streets and saying, hey, Pittsburgh, like, we're a, you know, we're a bike ped, you know, similar to open streets are taking a more active role. At any rate, so that is kind of the, the concept, I think. And it's that we all have a role to play. This can't be solved just with the infrastructure, just by DOMI, just by council, just by public safety, right? So hopefully this is just kind of like a, it's a framework, right? An organizing framework for addressing this issue together.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Hey, I'm waiting for the answer about the trail. I'm not going to forget.
Drum roll. So for the West End Trolley Trail, my understanding is that, you know, we're working through those drainage issues with PWSA, which we spoke about previously. But that final design should be wrapped up by the end of the summer with the bids for construction going out this fall. And if everything, you know, that 71 weeks, you know, type of process, if everything aligns, we hope to break ground later this year for clearing, ground clearing and the types of activities that you can do in winter.
People will see something. It may not be finished before I leave office, but it will be finished, maybe before I die. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I've seen this happen before. But anyway, we move a lot of dirt. It's all, it's this trail of all recycled material. It's an old trolley line for people who don't know. But anyway, there were trails before that Tom Murphy did. And I'm wondering if that's some things that we could look at a map and open up. Nobody seems to know where the map is. But it was an old trail system that he worked through and there are trails in the West End that still have signage that say "trail". And so I think that there's some way that maybe if we could figure out that, maybe you could connect those and open some of them back up and maybe they'll make some connections. I'm going to be honest, I don't, I just come upon them accidentally. I don't look for them, okay? Just like his white picket fence thing. He had a white picket fence policy or something where, you know, he was cleaning up the town. And there's still a white picket fence in my district, but it's covered over by weeds. Yeah, so, but anyway, but he, he had some good initiatives and that was, the trail system was really one of them. So I think if you can look into that, I don't know, I don't know how you find those, the maps.
Archives.
It's really a chore because they, I don't think they ever fully connected. I think they started it but never, maybe never finished. I don't know. Just if you can look into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Charlin.
All right, thank you. And, you know, I want to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Warwick here. I, I said in a publication last year that I think I will be the council member that rides my bike to work the most, but I think you've definitely beaten me out this year. I, I, maybe as a staffer was, was a little more committed than I've been so far this year. So, but I, I'm going to get there and, and don't, don't you worry.
It's the e-bike. You got to get the e-bike.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I don't have an excuse. I, I've got a pretty, pretty short commute here. And, you know, and, and it's, I, I love when we're, we're having these conversations. I, I feel I'm always learning new terminology. You know, this is something that I think is, is near and dear to me, but maybe something I don't dwell on so, so much. I, I heard the term today, non-indivi- non-individualized motor vehicle, which I, I thought was, you know, really interesting. And, and, you know, I, I understand the, the vulnerable road user and as a bike user. And I have walked to work a couple of times this year, so maybe I'm, I'm not quite there. And understanding the vision, the Vision Zero is not just about biking, but about, about the, the whole, the whole platform here. I do, you know, and I said this last time we talked about this and I'll, I'll say this again. Roads are one of, one of the most basic utilities and the most basic services that we offer residents and people coming to visit the city and, you know, everyone that comes through. And, and we don't want to provide a service that kills people, right? That's true for every other service we provide. It should be true for roads too. So, easy, easy to sell me on this. I do have to question though, what actually are we doing today? Because we committed to Vision Zero in April of 2015. And we adopted a plan for Vision Zero then. So what was it between then and now that we couldn't have done? was it between then and now that we couldn't have done that we're doing now? I mean, what, legislatively, is it, is it just we need to, to, you know, have the, the announcement of it, but, but ultimately, we, we did this before? So, so what is it legislatively? Is there a budgetary constraint? Is there a cooperative agreement? What, what is it that's changed from 2015 to now?
I'll go ahead and take that one. My understanding, and this would, this predates DOMI existing as a department, is that, and I believe it was in the complete streets policy, which would have been 2016, a commitment to Vision Zero, but just that, a commitment to Vision Zero, nothing about...
I see adopt in, in the press release from April of 2015, but...
I can, I can say, you know, having been with the city for the past seven years, we hadn't convened anything out of that commitment that was expressed previously.
So this is like rejuvenated energy?
I think we're looking at it as a new mayoral administration that's reaffirming a commitment to safer streets, but with definitive action here, especially action that is calling departments other than DOMI to be at the table to help solve these problems. And that is the piece of this ordinance that I think is most valuable, is that it's not DOMI, you know, sole responsibility, but we're actually acknowledging that there's budget implications to this, there's public safety implications to this. It takes political support and buy-in as well to, to actually move the needle.
I keep hitting this one. Sorry. And, and that, when, when, when I first got here, I think some of the first requests that came from Bike Pittsburgh is, when are you going to be a Vision Zero city? When are you going to be a Vision Zero city? I think the Vision Zero Network may have missed that. Certainly I missed it. And so I think, in addition to the, I think the, the real charm of the ordinance is, is what Angie says, but I do think there's value, even if it is merely raising the profile again, because the partners that we need to achieve the vision, we're not aware that we had embarked on that. And the network that supports Vision Zero, which is national and Swedish and everybody, you know, was not aware. So I think, even if it were merely that, I actually think it's worth doing that at this point.
Yeah, I, I understand, new mayor and new announcement. What, I guess, I, maybe because I, again, I understand a lot of these concepts, but maybe don't understand some of the terminology here. Are we a Vision Zero, were we a Vision Zero city before, and now we're a Vision Zero city? I mean, we're, we're not at a point where we don't kill anyone on our roads.
That's correct.
But are we, were we previously, you know, a Vision Zero city, and this will change us to becoming a Vision Zero city? Or when do you get that zero, Vision Zero classification?
Hi, I'm Stephanie Gagnon, management analyst here at the city. So the Vision Zero, to become a designated Vision Zero city by the Vision Zero Network, we do have to apply for that specification. So we will have to submit a plan, our high injury network, and what we're doing to tackle the issue. I think for our Vision Zero plan, I wasn't previously aware of the 2015 commitment, but in terms of what we're moving forward with the interdepartmental working group, we are going to have immediate actions we can take that maybe aren't happening because everybody's working in silos and everybody's kind of, has their own ideas, but we're not collaborating. So we're bringing this interdepartmental working group and agencies like PennDOT to the table, so we can really start to collaborate on those short and long-term goals.
Yeah. I, I'm disheartened to hear that we weren't doing that previously, and I, perhaps there was a legislative constraint for us to be able to submit those, you know, that information, but happy that we're able to do that now. And if we weren't Vision Zero before, let's be Vision Zero now. And, you know, the second best time to plant a tree is right now, so.
And if I can respond to that, I think, keep in mind the maybe national context and the US, the Department of Transportation that we had at the federal level at around that same time. I will say that USDOT has only strengthened their requirements around safety, and so there are certain grant opportunities that they're asking for a commitment of Vision Zero to be eligible for the Safe Streets for All Grants, for instance. And so I think that that is also another thing that is like giving us the push of like, we can't just say it, we're actually being told we have to have a plan, and that plan, you know, can make us eligible to unlock certain sources of funding. I think we did do great work over the past couple of years, but maybe we weren't putting it under that umbrella. And I'm, I'm looking forward to this new sort of re-engagement around, around it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I love the idea of a, a new energy around something, and, you know, even if that is new energy around something that's, you know, existed for nine years, I, I think it's important, especially when we're talking about people dying on our roads. I can't imagine what city wouldn't want to do that.
Yeah, and I think we have a benefit in that there's been other cities that have charted this path for us, that now we can fall behind. The development of our high injury network, we were able to do in-house. That was what was presented to council in the post-agenda on Monday. The only reason why we were able to do that in-house is because documents and others have been published to say, this is how you do the work, this is the methodology to do it correctly, and other cities have done it, and we were able to model off of their work. And so, you know, I, I, we got there, and I think we've been positioned, maybe, we, we may have been benefited by not going first in this.
I, I want our city to steal every other city's great ideas. That's, we, we don't need to, to learn from their failures. I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Still on first round, although I, I might have allowed someone to sneak in two questions in first round. Apologies for that. Council President Lavelle.
Oh, thank you. Quick question. How will the enforcement of traffic laws play into this? There was a woman who unfortunately came and spoke about being hit at Center and Craig, and not only do cars run red lights at that intersection all the time, as they do downtown, so do the buses run red lights in that intersection all the time. They do it downtown as well. And I almost hit a bikes, a bicyclist in that intersection when I was trying to turn right on red, as they tried to fly through the intersection when it was also red. So how does the enforcement of our traffic laws play into this? Because I often see that as part of the problem.
You're exactly right. So that's sort of the whole driver, for lack of a better, better word, behind Vision Zero is this idea that, again, it's not just engineering, it's not just the Department of Transportation, it's the Departments of Public Safety come to the table. So enforcement is one of the mechanisms that will be fleshed out as part of the plan and the work of this working group.
And I think you all can help. One of the things that we're continually putting in front of the legislature in Harrisburg is, could we have automated speed cameras? Because it's really hard to have an officer at every corner, but technology could do a lot here. So we need, sometimes we need some legislative changes to let us do that. We could all, we could go on lobbying day together.
I'd be certainly more than willing to do that. Do we currently have an understanding of intersections such as Center and Craig, Center and Grant Street, many intersections where we know there's continual repeat offending of our traffic laws?
So we primarily at DOMI rely on crash data. And so when those violations have resulted in a reportable crash, and by reportable, I mean, it's met the threshold set by the state for inclusion in their database. So was a vehicle damaged to the extent that it could not drive off on its own? Was someone injured? Was PennDOT infrastructure or, you know, property damaged? That is primarily the way we know. We, we know that we have received authorization in the past from the state and at the city level to do red light camera enforcement, and we're working through to try to bring that back. And there is money already in a previous year's capital budget, as I'm sure you're well aware, to implement that. So we're closer than ever, I believe, to getting that on the street. The speed enforcement would be another great opportunity. And we have been meeting for years with public safety. We do have relationships. So I don't want this to sound like that some of these coordination, that this coordination doesn't happen. It's happening. This is putting formal parameters around it. Because like Angie mentioned earlier, in order to have, just bear with me, bear with me for 30 seconds, in order to have red light enforcement, not only do you need the, to have identified what locations are the most critical for that. So that requires data from either public safety or data that DOMI would collect. You need to procure the infrastructure, you need to procure the cameras and have them installed, have them maintained. You need to have the data connections to make sure that that data is maintained. You have to have the staff to evaluate that data. And then you have to have the enforcement arm be able to actually issue citations. And so right there, that's DOMI, that's innovation and performance, that's public safety. There are all these departments that have to work together in order to have one program, even with what seems like a very simple solution, come forward. And that's why we're so enthusiastic about the Vision Zero Working Group, because it's an opportunity for all of the players that touch so much of this work to come together and to prioritize which of those efforts to throw their weight behind.
Okay, agree. Where, where are we? Because I thought, over the years, we were building out the infrastructure in order to be able to do the red light camera enforcement. Where are we sort of in that step?
Sure. Angie, do you want to talk a little bit about the work your group is doing on that?
Yeah, I think we have a good handle on the regulatory piece of making this and operationalizing this program. Where we need to be working is in the procurement of the system and actual, you know, installation of, of potentially cameras. We know that we need to have the local ordinance reauthorized. We need to identify the locations that we want to install red light enforcement cameras. DOMI has done some of the initial research. So we've been talking with Philadelphia, who runs a really robust Arley program, and they've been very helpful to us. They told us to expect up to 24 months to actually have the system online. That's, you know, from the point at which you're identifying, you know, the location to actually having it installed and operating. And I do think that the, one of the first initiatives out of this interdepartmental working group, I would like to be an actual movement towards operationalizing Arley. Who's going to own the system? Because in Philadelphia, it's the parking authority. Is it going to be DOMI? Is it going to be public safety? Is it going to be our parking authority? Until, you know, until we have those entities, I think, in the room to talk about what the system is, how it's being used, and what it can offer, and what it takes to run it, we're not going to have an answer to that question.
Okay, thank you.
Second round, Councilperson Warwick.
Yeah, I just, so with regard to Councilman Charlin's comments, I, I think you make a good point about accountability, right? So I, I know, we heard some speakers, I think, say 2035, I don't know, you know, I don't know what, but, but I think that's good for us as members, as, right, as the administration. I mean, 2035, that's in 11 years, right? So if, you know, for, for the newer members in any case, right, if this is somewhere you want to be, that's, you know, so that, but that's really on us, right, to make sure that this isn't just a, a press release and nothing more, right? So, so yeah, I'm, I'm definitely looking forward to sticking to it and, you know, continue to, to, you know, to bang the drum. As far as grants, I think that's also, right, that's also a really key part, right? Because is, is talking about how we use our grant money. I know I'm a big fan of the pogo bikes, I think that's no secret, right? And I do just want to say, I know that there's a lot of, well, more and more, of course, like, traffic safety is, is, is a top priority for more and more people moving into the city, but there are always those folks who, you know, who, oh, they don't like those speed bumps, or they don't like the bike lanes. And I know, and, and just to, to sort of try and, you know, and I get that, like, change is hard, and it can be, you know, we have a, well, I know how to drive, I'm a good driver, whatever, oh, we, but, but just for those folks who, who do drive, you know, there are folks who drive, and they're going to drive, and they're not going to get on their bike, and they don't necessarily feel like they should be scolded into biking or whatever, told that they're bad people because they drive a truck or, or something like that. You know, for, for, for all those folks, I, I want to remind them, you know, when we talk about street safety, it's a quality of life issue, because I don't know a parent or grandparent out there, I don't care where you live, I don't care if you are, you know, like, the biggest monster truck advocate in the world, you probably don't let your kids play in your front, your, your young kids, right, little kids play in your front yard, not because they're going to get abducted, not because, but because you are afraid they will be hit by a car. And if you think back to sort of people like, oh, back in the day, right, back in the day, we used to bike around, I mean, I know I did as a kid, I used to bike around, just bike around, and it was fine, and, and nobody worried about that, right? There wasn't just this, like, constant terror. And, I mean, these days, I, you know, my youngest kids, I, I don't let them walk down to see their friend, right, like, you know, Greenfield Avenue, like, it makes me, my, my 11-year-old, I let him do it, you know, I let him do it, but God, it makes me really nervous. And, you know, and I say to him, I'm like, make sure you cross it, walk up to Lydia, make sure you cross at Lydia, but I, I, you know, like, I don't know if he does it. I don't know if he just crosses right there. So you can't, you've got to account for that, right? And that's, that, that's what this is, and, and I think that that's an area where I think everybody can, can kind of relate to what this is and bring it into their own lives, is just kind of, what did you used to be able to do as a kid around the neighborhood, right? Like, back in the day of Pittsburgh, right? What, what did it feel like to be a kid in the summertime and just running around, right? And that's not something we do. And it, it, it's really because of the cars, that's the thing. It's really because of the cars. So.
Thank you. Second round, Councilwoman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
One more time. I could tell a story.
You going for a third round, too?
I could tell a story.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I want to take the opportunity, First Director, to applaud you and thank you for the pedestrian and vehicle modifications we're making up on Broadway Avenue in Beachview. You know, it was, always comes with growing pains, people aren't used to, you know, the turns changing on them and things like that. But, but as we had to divert that money through a second phase, and I will tell you, Mr. Panini and Mr. Setzler, who was out, fantastic, you know, myself, State Senator Fontana, and those two went to almost every intersection, we're like, what are we going to do here? They came up with some great suggestions. It's fully under construction now, every intersection's broken up, and, you know, but, but it has made it. You know, we, we made safety improvements there a couple of years back, but these are even further safety improvements. And not only are they good for the automobiles, but mostly around pedestrians, so, which we had a lot of people, you know, run over on that road. So, so your team has done a great job on that, I will tell you, and we're looking forward to the final product. Councilman Mosley brought up, you know, trails, right, and Councilwoman Kail Smith brought up trails. And there's one way, I feel, we can introduce bikes in my district, and that is through the trails. Now, I have one of the largest greenways, next to Hayes, I believe, is the largest greenway in the city of Pittsburgh, two miles around, and, you know, it's a great walking path. Are we permitted, is there anything prohibiting us from putting, making that same walking path a bike trail?
That's something we'd have to look into.
Yeah. No, I wouldn't want to go concrete or asphalting it. We want to leave it natural, but, you know, if it's hard, whatever, it's, as long as it's not muddy. Selmsen Greenway.
You mean the entrance in District Two?
Yes, I was going to get to that. And protect me, Councilwoman Wilson, because I'm about ready to approach on one of her bridges again. So, but, but, you know, the Trolley Trail, right?
Yeah.
And, you know, I know you've been working on that for a number of years. There is a, two, maybe Councilwoman doesn't want to connect our districts, I'm not sure, but, but we have talked about this, right? The Trolley Trail, is that the same trail that goes across 376 in front of the, the Fort Pitt tunnels? You know, it's, it's not the same trail?
No.
Because there's an abandoned...
It connects Nobles Town Road to the West End. What is the bottom of the...
The West End Circle.
The West End Circle, and the, the trail coming off of Mount Washington, I can't think what it's called. The one from Mount Washington.
Emerald View.
Emerald View, thank you.
You're testing me.
So, so we're not far away, you know, we're not far away, but there is an abandoned, you know, train trussel, right, that goes across there. And it connects my district to Councilwoman Kail Smith's district. And it would be fantastic if we could get on a bike and go to the West End, or West End could come on, get on the bike and go to Brookline, you know, that would be, because otherwise, then they have to cross Banksville Road, which is also very dangerous. We're cut off by all these, like, major busy highways. So what's involved with that as far as, like, is it, is they, I think it's Norfolk and Western? Are they just like, no way? Or is there somehow that we could get in talks with them to...
Norfolk Southern.
What did I say? Norfolk Western?
I'm thinking Northwestern.
That's the Audi brand.
So I think you're talking about the Selmsen connection. So I think you're talking about the Selmsen connection, and that if we're talking about the same place, it's the railroad bridge that is actually owned by PennDOT, the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. So there has been a lot of interest in the community, and DOMI's been involved in conversations with lots of members about, of the community, what it would take to turn that into a bike ped trail, to complete that sort of network. Short answer, a lot, it would take a lot, but we are looking into it, because PennDOT, you know, approached us, and those community organizations approached us and said, hey, we're going to tear this down. Before we tear it down, it's part of our project, because we don't care about it for our project, we're doing a roadway project, but we happen to have to take this railroad alignment with this other work, do you want to consider taking ownership of it and making it into that multimodal trail? And so that takes a lot of consideration, you know, we have a lot of infrastructure in our city, and so it's a big, it's a big question mark.
Do we have to buy it?
I think they'd be giving it away, but, you know, there's costs associated with maintaining bridges.
Yeah, we'll see what's involved, we'll get Mr. Sessler out there, see what kind of condition it's in before we go committing to the sale, but, yeah.
I have hiked it myself with Eric.
Oh, okay, good.
It was a harrowing hike.
Yes, right, right.
In the current condition, so it'll take a lot, but there's, we are supportive of grants, and Angie might be able to talk a little bit about that.
I mean, truthfully, we're aware of this potential opportunity, and we're interested in understanding more about it. We've actually worked with some of our riverfront partners to put together a scope of work for a feasibility study, so that we can understand exactly what those environmental engineering and other issues are, that the city would need to think about before we would take on this piece of property and then actually do a trail project. So we are looking for funding to do potentially a feasibility study on that exact connection.
Oh, that's great to hear. I didn't even realize you were thinking about it, so, I know, you and I have talked about it, but that would not only connect the West End to Beachview Brookline area, you know, it's recreational and transportation, you know, so I think that would be great, I really do. I know it's complicated. One other thing I wanted to ask is, completes, or not the complete streets, the, what do you call the, open streets, is that right? When they shut down the strip district and, you know, everybody gets to ride anything they want without worrying about any vehicles. I would love to have that maybe on Brookline Boulevard, I think that would be very well-received. Shut it down for a day and just, you know, everybody go crazy with that, because in my district, everybody's working to ride a bike, so, just to be careful, you know. And what's that take? I mean, is that something that we just can institute, or?
It's managed by Bike Pittsburgh today, so I think they've got some folks in the audience, and I'm sure they're watching right now this conversation, and so, noted.
If they don't come to our district in our side town, you can start doing your own.
We've got big ones next year.
That's right, we're connected.
Love it.
Okay, so, again, thanks, thanks for all you've done around this. Again, thanks for Broadway Avenue, I'm really, you know, happy as to the safety improvements we've had up there. I'm in full support of this, you know, it's, sounds like a great thing, I love the enthusiasm and energy around it now, and I think that's probably half the battle in most cases, so, thanks.
Thank you. Third round, Councilwoman Kail Smith.
I'll just be really quick, I just want to tell, just a real quick story. I remember when I first met Bike Pittsburgh, and they were talking about needing a bike lane, and I said, wait a minute, so you want to be safe riding your bike? I said, you're talking to a woman who rode her bike down Robinson Street onto Fifth Avenue, which was two ways, cobblestone, and had a streetcar trolley trail straight up the middle. I said that you need a safest place, I said, but the thing that changed over those years was that the roads were cobblestone, and cars did go slower. And so I think that even though, you know, it may seem more dangerous to us, you know, when we were riding, the reality is, people slowed down because you couldn't speed on cobblestone road. So I wonder if there's ever, I know we're doing speed bumps and speed humps and all this thing, but I'm wondering if there's ever, you know, any places you're looking for that that might be a solution, you know, some different type of road material. That's all. You don't have to answer now, but if that'll be part of this, I'm curious.
Well, just say from my part, a couple of quick responses to things that other council members said, thank you for this, I mean, clearly, this is an issue that resonates with us, because it resonates with our communities, right? I wanted to give a shout out to Trail Pittsburgh, who maintains a lot of our single-track trails in our city parks. I also wanted to say that Councilwoman Kail Smith, to your question about the trails back in the Mayor Tom Murphy era, and especially in the West End, I know Darla Cravata was in charge of that project.
Darla Cravata.
So Darla, if you're listening from the county courthouse next door, working in county government, she might know the answer to some of those questions.
I actually met her through PPS, not even through the trails, yeah.
Got it, yeah. On red light cameras, you know, I am so glad we're talking about this today, and, you know, we've been talking about this for a couple of years now, and getting this going again, and I know how long it takes to get, you know, all the steps that we have to get in place to be able to reauthorize the legislation. So enthusiastic about getting that going, because, you know, just today, the speaker, you know, I finally met the speaker who was injured, thankfully not killed, at intersections partially in my district. You know, another speaker who spoke of Emily Hoffman, also partially in the district I represent, and have been working with her sister, Beth, to make that as safe as possible. But I guess that brings me to why I'm so grateful that we're doing this today, right? You know, we've been working for years, I want to honor the work that's been done over the decades, before DOMI even existed, when it was just like traffic engineers and people who cared about this in DPW, doing this work here and there, and then DOMI being created, and, again, really great work happening, but as much as possible in a, with a plan, but still inside of sort of a piecemeal way, and working with council members, and whatever council member kind of made the most noise, that's where the infrastructure came, and, you know, like, kind of whack-a-mole, like, someone gets hurt or killed over in this intersection, okay, then we prioritize that. And over here, and now, to be able to level up and pull it all together as part of a big plan is really great to see, so thank you all for the work you're doing, thank you, Councilwomen, for taking the lead on this. I'm so heartened that someone who cares so much about this on a personal level is really taking the lead on this at council, and really grateful to your work. So with that, all those in favor of Bill, where are we, 229, please say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, thank you. That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilwoman Wilson.
Bill 59, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning Code, Article Five Use Regulations, Chapter 911, Primary Uses, at Section 91102, Use Table in Chapter 91104A69, Use Standards, to Permit Single-Unit Attached Residential Uses in Residential Single-Unit Detached Districts Subject to Certain Standards.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Discussion, Councilwoman Wilson.
Thank you. I have an amendment that was passed around by Louise, thanked the Clerk's Office for preparing this. This amendment, as you can see in the yellow papers, it does change in the use table. So if we can point to the use table, just so we're on the same page, it does change, so, under the row, single attached residential, that changes, previously was an A for Administrator Exception, now it's PS, which is permitted or special exemption. And so, to further clarify, on the last page, it's really, we're basically getting at the same thing here, which is, sorry, in 911.04A dot 69A, you've got to love the zoning code, there is the single attached residential, and so then it further explains what that would be, what that use table correction would do. So, made for simple terms, I would say that was just another way that we're explaining what we're doing here. So, as a reminder, anything 35 feet or less would be by right, so you wouldn't have to get a special exception, and anything that is 35 feet, larger than 35 feet, would need a special exemption. And so they would go through those provisions. Previously, the way it was, how it was Administrator Exception, it was Administrator Exception, and then it further clarified that 35 feet or smaller was by right. So, we're just, so this is coming over from the Planning Commission as a contingent on their recommendation, which I'm very, very happy to see that it was a 5-0 vote in support of this legislation. So we're actually doing this, in my understanding, we're doing the same thing here, it's just, you know, we're being on board with how they want to define it, or how they want to use the, all the letters and all the identifiers correctly. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to amend, and then, happy to talk about the bill, and then it's going to have to be a motion for public hearing. So, motion to amend?
Councilman, clarification, amend by substitution?
Sorry. Thank you for that clarification. Motion to amend by substitution.
We have a motion to amend by substitution, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Councilwoman Warwick.
Just quickly want to say to Councilman Wilson, you know, the, I know that this sort of came out of like an incident, right, of an affordable housing needing to be built, and then zoning got in the way, et cetera, of just sort of moving quickly on good legislation to fix a problem. You know, I know that we're doing, like, there's an overhaul of our zoning code happening and in the process, but in the meantime, and, you know, I think we're all sort of keyed in on the fact that there are small changes that can be made quickly, and this is a really great example of one of those, and so I hope that, you know, once the whole process is through with the public hearing, et cetera, that that project can get moving, so, thank you.
Councilwoman Wilson, did you have additional comment?
I just want to say before I motion for a public hearing, that I just want to thank the Planning Commission and everyone that works in zoning for helping craft the bill. Also want to thank all the sponsors of the bill, I think it says a lot about this city council on, you know, how we feel about it, you know, making changes to our zoning code, that we're not shy about it, and that we want to do the right things to make sure that our city continues to grow, and that Pittsburgh is for everyone. I also want to thank, thank the administration for, you know, their collaboration on this as well, and I'll thank my staff for all the work they did on this. With that, I'd like to motion for a public hearing.
So-
I'm sorry.
We will take a vote, so all those in favor of amendment by substitution, please say aye.
Aye.
So the amendment is approved. Councilwoman Wilson.
Thank you. I always forget that step, I always think we did the approval. Corey, if you have anything to add, feel free. I know you took time out of your day to come online, so, you know, so I could possibly call on you, but it didn't seem like there was much comment, so I just wanted to give you the opportunity now, if you want to say anything.
Thank you, Councilman, this is Corey Lehman, DOMI Administrator, and happy to you all, I know it's been a long day, so I will be unusually brief, and save most of my comments on this for the public hearing. There is no functional change in the substitution, it's just a clarification, it just makes it more correct, more clear, since there isn't actually an Administrator Exception involved, so that was a little bit confusing, so, we just made it less confusing, and we're all ready to talk about it at the public hearing in a few weeks.
Thank you, thank you, Corey. We voted on it.
Did you make a motion to? Is there a motion to?
We vote on the amendment, right? Okay, all right. Motion to hold for cable cast public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We, motion to hold for cable cast public hearing.
Thank you.
Is approved. That brings us along to Bill 221.
Bill 221, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning, Article 902.03 Zoning Map, by changing from RMH, Residential Multi-Unit High Density, to UNC, Urban Neighborhood Commercial, Certain Properties Located on Shady Avenue in the Seventh Ward, City of Pittsburgh, known in Allegheny County Office of the Deed Registry, and a portion, the registry is block and lot number 84G239, and a portion of 84G258.
Motion to send the Planning Commission for report and recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bill will be sent to Planning Commission for report and recommendation. That moves us to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross.
Bill 213, Resolution Amending Resolution 428 of 2021, which provided for the extension of a professional services agreement or agreements with NCR Corporation, to provide citywide credit, debit, and e-check payment services for the collection of various program and permitting fees for the city of Pittsburgh, by exercising the option to extend the term of the agreement for three additional years at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bill 213 has, it's affirmative recommendation, excuse me. Bill 214.
Bill 214, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, to enter into an agreement with Pittsburgh Community Television, Inc., for services related to administering and managing the city's designated public access channels for a period of two years at an amount not to exceed 66% of funding received into designated code accounts for the years 2023 and 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 215.
Bill 215, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance, to enter into a content licensing agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Google LLC, for Google to share certain data with the city at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? I actually have a question about this, do we have some, do we have a representative here to discuss? Welcome, and thank you for your patience during this long extended meeting, and I don't want to belabor it too much, but I just wanted to ask, can you, can you explain to us and to the public what the nature of the data sharing agreement with Google is? And just please introduce yourself.
Sure. Chris Palasco, Department of Innovation and Performance, Chief Data Officer. So, as part of a project with the Department of City Planning and the Department of Public Works, the city has been working with an external partner called Resilient Cities Catalyst to update some of our climate action plan work, and part of that is specifically around the, you know, the number of trees in this, in the city, and we don't have a great way of getting information about how many trees we have outside of our street tree inventory, which is very good, but is limited to places where cars can drive to collect the street tree inventory. So we worked with Resilient Cities Catalyst to work with the Google's Environmental Insights Initiative, right, with whom we, Department of City Planning has worked before to do some like carbon dashboard work around city activity, right? And we said, hey, could you help us figure out a way to get an estimate of where the trees are in the city? Right? We know where the street trees are, and they said, yeah, we'd look into that, and basically they're using the existing Google satellite data and images of trees to figure out what is a tree, and returning to us an estimate on, you know, the points of where trees are in the city. And they're also going to tell us what genus, but not species, right, the trees are, to the extent that they can, right? And so this will help us, because the street tree inventory is great, and we have, what, like, 40% of our city is covered in beautiful trees, the problem is, we don't know how many trees are in the greenway. We have a little bit of the park, Schumlee Park, near Flagstaff Hill, part of the, part of the tree inventory. Outside of that, not so much. So, this was an effort to help us to get an understanding of what the actual number of trees is, you know, across the city, so that we could figure out how to grow that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I appreciate that explanation. All those in favor of Bill 215, please say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. And having already voted on Bill 244, that concludes our meeting agenda. So, a few announcements, this afternoon, council will hold a briefing on the 90-day report detailing the proposed use of Affordable Housing Bond 2023 Series, funds in accordance with Bill 2023 1612. Sessions are scheduled at 1:30 PM and 2:30 PM. To manage each session and to prevent a quorum, please confirm attendance with the city clerk's office. Tomorrow, Thursday, March 14th, at 11:00 AM, council will hold a cable cast post agenda at the request of Councilperson Robert Charland, relative to the broken zoning code. the broken zoning code. Also next week, council will hold its regular meeting on Tuesday, March 19th, at 10:00 AM, and the standing committee meeting on Wednesday, March 20th, at 10:00 AM. To register to speak at council meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Can I please get a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.